Order, Mr. Gibbs, will you please read the statement of compliance?
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one. Notice that this meeting has been properly advertised in the Daily Record and Suburban Trends. Its agenda has been posted at the appropriate locations and a copy has been filed with the Paquonic Township Clerk.
Thank you. Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Blumer?
Here.
Mr. Cerisi?
Here.
Ms. Dempsey?
Here.
Mrs. Esposito?
Here.
Mr. Gittens absent, Mr. McSweeney?
Here.
Mr. Pompeo?
Here.
Mr. Senic?
Here.
And Mrs. Shenton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Eleven, please stand for the flag salute. All right, good evening. Welcome to our April fifteenth workshop meeting. Tonight, the board will honor Sophia Clutchett for becoming the first ever female NJAC champion in PTHS history. And not that that's not great, but additionally, I want to remind everyone that Sophia followed up her championship by placing fourth in the state tournament in Atlantic City. And I've always known Paquonic to be a town that takes great pride in its wrestling programs and the achievements of its wrestlers. And I know that what Sophia, you and your teammates are doing, especially with regard to female wrestling, is just establishing something in Paquonic that I think is going to go on for years to years to come. And you're setting a very high bar. So congratulations and well done. And tonight I have a very short report. The last thing I want to do is just wish the members of our community that celebrated a very happy Passover next week. That's it. And I'll pass it over to Dr. Portis.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Senic. Like, my report's quite long compared to yours. Hope everyone enjoyed spring break and that the first week back last week went well. Sometimes that transition back can be a tough one, but we've had plenty of activities going on to keep us focused and occupied. Here's a brief, but certainly not comprehensive overview of some of the events from my calendar. Last week, Mr. Reiner, who was our school security specialist, Mr. Lucas and Officer Giuliano and I observed the Mount Olive reunification drill at Roxbury High School. We met with administrators, security officials, and law enforcement agents from the county and state, learned about their process, and were also able to engage in a good deal of Q and A. I have quite a few notes that I'm able to share, and I was told that I was the only person who was actually writing notes during the session, and I take no shame in that. I take notes. The Veterans Wall Committee met last week and is making tremendous progress in our design plans and process of narrowing down the logistics. We're fortunate to have people with tremendous knowledge and energy who are going to make this idea a reality, and the group is already so impressed, though not surprised with the generosity of donations, both monetary and in kind. Last week, I met with Coach Bianchi and Mr. Sillipina to review plans for the sign that will be unveiled on December nineteenth. As we continue with the gym naming process, we really want to make that night a true event and honor the legacy of Coach Keller appropriately. I'm really excited. We have a good balance of board involvement, athletic department involvement, administrative involvement, and community involvement. We really want to make this something special. This week and next, I'll be meeting with the principals individually to review staffing in their buildings in order to identify needs and target the balance between efficiency and effectiveness. That'll be ongoing for next week in advance of our staffing meeting, which is May thirteenth. On April seventeenth, I will attend the Morris County Educators Association Friends of Education Dinner, which is a wonderful evening in which contributors to education throughout the county are honored for their dedication to education and community. Exciting news, I'll be meeting later this week with the registrar and elementary school principals, continue our work with kindergarten placement as we prepare to greet the class of two thousand thirty-seven in September. Yep, that year sounds made up.
Ugh.
Another important meeting will take place on April nineteenth, when Mrs. Mildred and I will join township leaders and police representatives in an event hosted by the town health officer, in which we'll discuss how we can collaborate with lawmakers to combat the growing issue of vaping among young people. And finally, two really great events to share are the Hillview sixtieth anniversary celebration, which is going to take place on April twenty-fourth. Sophia might remember the fiftieth, which was from her year when she was in kindergarten, when I was her first year principal at that school. And then the PTHS Spring Musical is going to take place the next night. It starts on Thursday, the twenty-fifth. Another performance Friday, and then a matinee on Saturday, the twenty-seventh. And just kind of a funny note, since we're talking about the wrestling, I've received a crash course in wrestling over the past, I guess, few months, courtesy of Mr. Senic, but very much inspired by the work of our wrestling team and Sophia specifically. And I enjoy telling people that it is rare that you get a phone call from the board president around like six-thirty in the morning on a Saturday telling you, hey, she's going out in like three hours, so you gotta be ready. Like, okay, got it. But it's been, it's been really exciting getting a chance to feel the energy of somebody who's very passionate about wrestling, but also throughout the community. And I'm so glad that Mr. Sillipina is going to be, is here to be able to introduce Sophia and Coach Paglia and then get a chance to do a little recognition. So that concludes my report. I think I could probably just bounce it over to Mr. Sillipina.
Brian, how much weight did you cut for, for the?
I used to actually be thin, none. I just didn't eat, though, so. Thank you to the Board of Education and Dr. Portis for allowing me to recognize an outstanding student athlete from the winter season. Sophia Clutchett is the definition of a trailblazer when it comes to female wrestling. As a sophomore, her resume includes wins in dual meets for the boys' team, tournament wins, and an NJSIAA state place winner. Tonight, I'd like to call up Coach Jay La Paglia to speak about Sophia and the impact she has had on the wrestling team at PTHS.
Thank you, Board, for having me here tonight for celebrating Sophia, one of Paquonic's wrestlers, who just happens to be a female. Thank you, Coach, for inviting me here. I appreciate it. I'm going to read this so I don't mess it up. Sophia's desire to improve and meet her potential is unmatched. She's one of the most coachable athletes I ever had the pleasure to coach. She possesses every quality a coach could ask for: confidence, passion, dedication, an ability to take direction, commitment, intelligence, humility. These traits are not only traits that assist an athlete, they are traits that she will carry on throughout life. These attributes make her a great person, and that has nothing to do with gender. It has more to do with her values and how her parents are raising her. Wrestling is a difficult sport. Sophia's success is well-earned. I'd like ten more wrestlers like Sophia in my wrestling room. Any coach coaching any sport would. That being said, I would like to provide you with some of her accomplishments. She is Paquonic's first female wrestler in school history. Sophia has gone two straight years without missing a practice, and that includes six AM morning lifts, summer dual meets, and wrestling camp. She's placed in the following tournaments this year, wrestling at a hundred and twenty pounds. She placed second in the Bloomfield Tournament. She placed sixth in the Elizabeth Tournament. She was first place in the NJAC Tournament, making her the first female in Paquonic history to win a girls' tournament. She then placed second in the regions. And finally, Sophia placed fourth in the Girl State Tournament, making her yet again the first girl in Paquonic history to place in the States, also tying the highest place finish in school history. This next part I'm going to wing. So when it comes to tournaments, there's brackets, and Sophia was in a tough weight class. The girl at one-twenty-six was a returning state champ, and Sophia wanted to wrestle one-twenty. It wasn't an option to go up. She wanted to stay at one-twenty. What we didn't realize is that a lot of the other girls were avoiding that one-twenty-six girl, so they came down to Sophia's weight class. Every tournament that Sophia wrestled in, there were twenty-six girls in the bracket. So sporadically, there could be eight girls in a bracket. Every tournament Sophia wrestled in, it was jam-packed. She was the underdog. We came out of nowhere this season. We were low seeded. No one knew who we were. It was pronounced Pequonok. Her name was mispronounced twenty times every tournament. But that didn't bother Sophia. It didn't scare her. She jumped into the tournament, mind ready, focused, and ready to go. The seed means nothing. It's what you do on the mat. She outperformed in every tournament she wrestled in. She finished the season competing against girls with twenty wins and seven losses. Every girl that she lost to placed in the state tournament. Competing against the boys, Sophia had six wins and five losses, with an overall record of twenty-six wins and twelve losses. Now, if any of you went down to Atlantic City in the state tournament, you know, girls' wrestling is somewhat new. When it comes to the boys, there's a lot of history in there, and a lot of teams have robes. And they pass this robe down to down, down to the wrestlers that place in the state. Well, we have a robe from nineteen seventy-one. And I'm like, this is going to be good. We're going to bring that robe down. And we're superstitious, me and Coach Posey, so we don't want to jinx anything. Sophia has no idea we have the robe. So we're running the tournament. Sophia's not anxious at all. The stadium's huge, doesn't blink an eye. She's going out there. She's performing like it's at our home gym. She revenged losses down at the state tournaments. Girls that beat her during the season, she beat in the state tournament. And then it came down to the third and fourth match, and she finished fourth in the state. So I pull out this robe. It's a little dusty, hasn't been on the podium in a long time. And she looks at it and she goes, that's nice. I go, this is going to be cool. Pose was with me. Coach Michelle was with me. So we put the robe on her, and we're looking around. There's no other girls wearing a robe, and I'm like, this is awesome. The whole state, the parade of champions, we had coaches coming up to us. We had girls going up to Sophia. That's a cool robe. Where'd you get that robe? The coaches were like, I haven't seen that robe since the seventies, so we brought it back. Sophia's goal was to get down to Atlantic City. She accomplished that goal. She surpassed it by placing, by getting on the podium. She's only a sophomore. She has two more years to go. The next goal is being on top of that mountain and being the first state champ in Paquonic history. Boy or girl, it doesn't matter. She's a wrestler for Paquonic High School, and I like to say, great job, Sophia. We are so proud of you.
Sophia, how many people, how many girls are you going to recruit for next year? Okay. Keep trying.
Thank you very much.
And thank, and thank all of you. That was, that was wonderful. And I think to Mr. Cerisi's point, I think your recruiting may not be for next year, maybe for five years, maybe eight years, ten years. You know, community was paying pretty close attention. I will say too that the robe is actually older than I am, so that, make it so that we have to put that in the budget to pick up a new robe at some point, but that, that, that's, that's pretty incredible. Congratulations.
Okay, Mr. Gibbs, do you have a report?
Yes. Good evening. The county and state approved the school district's twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school budget. A budget presentation will be given at the April twenty-ninth regular board meeting, and the board will be approving the budget. On Wednesday, March twentieth, the new carpet was installed in the auditorium that was completed. The new oven for the high school kitchen was installed on March twenty-seventh. And on Tuesday, April second, there was a final walkthrough for the ESIP mechanical for HVAC system, which was completed. The media center beams were replaced on Thursday, April fourth, and the final completion of the cosmetic work will be done on, was done on Wednesday, April tenth. On March twenty-second, the school district received a letter of acceptance from the state to the revised long-range facility plans additions in accordance to the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget. This is just a reminder for those who have not completed their financial disclosure statements to let me know if you have any questions or difficulties in submitting your statements. We were in the process of setting up the October twenty-twenty-four New Jersey School Board's workshop early registration, so we will need to know how many board members will be attending. This year, the dates are Monday, October twenty-first to Thursday, October twenty-fourth. And finally, the ninth town meeting that will be held on Tuesday, April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, has been canceled. And the new meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May eighth, starting at seven PM, located at the high school auditorium. The town meeting will be a zone, excuse me, zoning board of adjustment meeting, regular to approve the One School Global's new facility that will be located across the street from the high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Now open the meeting up to public comment on agenda items only. Member of the public may speak for a maximum period of five minutes by the clock during this portion of the meeting. And you can speak on any agenda item only during your five minutes. If a member of the public raises a question, please direct a question to the board president and state your name and sign in before you begin.
John Asian, Pumped in Plains, I'm here representing the high school music parents. I just want to put on record, under the workshop item, CIS, the out-of-state field trip for band camp, we're still finalizing the cost for that activity, so if there's any changes to that number, we'll notify the staff to adjust that before the business meeting. I also like to remind the board, anyone watching, parents, interested students, that band camp is mandatory for the marching band. And so the music parents offer financial assistance to, to any families that have need to, to, to afford band camp, to be in the band.
Thank you.
And I'll just put it out there, too. Once you guys have a sense of the number, because you're meeting Wednesday, if you have anybody, Mr. Strifer, Mr. Hayes, or reach out to me, I'll make sure that it's amended for the agenda. And then moving forward, if it has to get adjusted, we can always do that, too.
Okay, thank you. That'll move us into our business items. Mr. Cerisi, will you please move PMC?
I would like to move PMC two seventeen dash twenty-four through PMC two twenty-six dash twenty-four.
Second.
Any question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gittens is absent. Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senic?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is CIS. Mr. McSweeney, would you please move CIS?
Yes, I'd like to move CIS eighty-four dash twenty-four through CIS eighty-six dash twenty-four.
Second.
Any question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gittens is absent. Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senic?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up is FFA. Mr. Blumer, would you please move FFA?
Yes, I'd like to move FFA one twenty-eight dash twenty-four through FFA one thirty-two dash twenty-four.
Second.
Any question or discussion?
Yeah, I just have one question on FFA one twenty-eight twenty-four, the shared services agreement for the landscaping. So I know they put, Mr. Rur put a pretty detailed response in there about the increases. It looks like it's about three percent each year for a five-year contract, so we're comfortable with that increase. That looks like something manageable for us and reasonable.
They have an increase in.
Yeah, it's been a while since even bumped this up, yeah. Yeah, and I could say too, I had a pretty good conversation with township manager about this, and he was explaining, without completely disaggregating costs, but where they were seeing an increase in labor, they were seeing an increase in supplies, they were seeing an increase in fuel, and unfortunately, a lot of the rates that we, well, fortunately, the rates that we'd been paying for the last ten years were based on much, much lower costs.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gittens is absent. Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo?
Yes.
Ms. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senic?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us into our workshop portion of the meeting, and first up is PMC with three discussion items: school calendars, a staffing update, and the school performance reports that were just released based on the testing from last year.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Senic. As far as school calendar updates, we actually have three different calendars in backup right now. One is for the current school year. There is one date that's being adjusted. The twenty-four, twenty-five is in there. There are no adjustments there, but Mrs. Aug wanted to show off her formatting abilities. True story. And then the twenty-five, twenty-six isn't, is in there as we've updated one date since we last spoke about that one. So the first one I'll speak about is the school calendar for this school year. Today is April fifteenth, so I am comfortable saying that we will most likely not have snow that will cause the cancellation of school moving forward. And so we are able to assign a snow day date. The day that works best with the existing calendar is Tuesday, May twenty-eighth. That is the day after Memorial Day, so if you're worried about getting stuck in traffic coming back from the shore or other points, you get a, you get a little grace day there. For the last few years, we've put it to a vote for the seniors, and unfortunately, we didn't have flexibility with the days. The only other possibility was Monday, June tenth, and I feel like that would have been an affront to their sensibilities to asking them to choose between a random Monday in June and the day after Memorial Day. So I made an executive decision, and that day will be a snow day. If there is something between now and then that requires the closing of school, we would take that day back, but enjoy May twenty-eighth. It's yours.
Can I just ask out of curiosity why Tuesday and not Friday?
Friday, we had a couple of things that were already in the calendar, including, hey, say, some, some testing dates. That's one of our last days. If we have kids who miss AP testing, that is our last day. We can get them in there. I would have preferred, to be honest, that Friday, and we could have chanced it, but I wasn't willing to take that risk. The twenty-eighth was the cleanest one. Only problem is twenty-eighth, and I'll talk to Mr. Senic more about it, is we do have a board meeting scheduled that night. I have a feeling that I will have nine people very angry with me if we still have it that night. So we'll see what we can do. Ten people. And then for the calendar for twenty-five, twenty-six, the, we had that conversation about whether it was worth it to come back for one day, Friday, January second, two thousand twenty-six. And then that would be the first day back after a break, and then, of course, you have the weekend. We were working with the association and getting a little flexibility with an earlier day in the calendar to be able to use for professional development day as opposed to a flat-out day off. So we will be able to grant that Friday, January second, two thousand twenty-six. So for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year calendar, we will have a very long winter break, which I think will be well-received and hopefully get all the germs out of the buildings. For a school year twenty-five, twenty-six, so the, the first day of the winter recess school year will begin, staff will have professional development days on June second, sorry, June, September second and September third, two thousand twenty-five, the first day for kids is going to be Thursday, the fourth of September. And the last day of school that year, in other words, PTHS graduation, will be June eighteenth. So as far as calendars go, it's, it's my dream because Labor Day is pretty early, and it gives me a lot more flexibility. And I will, I will say it again, I will take one day in September over two, two days in June. It's much more productive to teach in the fall than it is in, in, in May or June. I don't have any questions about the school calendar? Next one, there's not much report on, on the staffing update. We, we're in good shape with staffing as we go into the end of the school year. We do have some leaves, leave requests that are being honored that we're working to staff. And the good thing is, we do have a candidate pool of people coming out of universities who can pick up a job for the last twenty, twenty-five days of the school year, which is good because that's kind of an audition for them. We've been posting positions with deadlines for when applicants should get their submissions in, which I was told by a candidate, not every district does. I don't understand why you would do that. I don't like a type of just open-endedness. But another thing that we're looking to update when we, when we do post is to include salary ranges for the positions that we post. We have not begun this practice yet. I would be surprised if, if there's not a law about this implemented within the next couple of years saying that you have to post the salary range. But I think that that's good practice, especially considering that our salary guide is publicly available. I, I like the fact that if you want to see, well, what is the, what does the salary guide look like at Paquonic? You just have to go to our webpage and it's right there. I also, when I'm interviewing people, I will share with them the contract as a, either as a PDF or as an open source so that they can take a look at it and, and come to me with questions. But I like that level of transparency, and I think it speaks to our level of confidence about what we have and what we're able to provide for potential employees. Any questions there? And I understand the job fair down in Baskin Ridge went well on that, that, that was the Thursday of spring break. Both, both Ms. Abrams and Dr. Sheridan went to that. They said they had some interested applicants. Paquonic seemed to be generating some positive conversation. We'll, we'll see if it produces any results. And then the last item is a much more involved one. The school forms reports were, were just released, and as Mr. Senic alluded to it, these are, these largely focus on state testing data that's taken from the results that we, that we received back in June and July. Those were the preliminary results. Those aren't shared with the public. We use those for some internal planning purposes. The, the more public scores were released back in September, we reported on them back in October at Cedar Crest. It was actually, it was a really, I thought it was a great meeting and a really good presentation. I, I enjoyed it. What we're seeing for these school performance reports is that they're integrating a few more data sources for the high school. You see SAT, PSAT, and AP involvement as well as career and technical education, which is, sounds like it's a very broad term. It's actually very specialized, which frustrates me. The kids in Allied Health Academy, that doesn't count as career and technical education. Not sure what it should count as, if it doesn't count as that. Nevertheless, we also see attendance factored in, and the data gets broken out a little bit more and, and compared to other, other groups throughout the state. So I had each of the principals prepare a report, and they were limited to one page each. Only one of the principals exceeded one page and was actually openly defiant about that in a way that made me proud of him. But I wanted them to look at three questions. What went right? What do we need to address? And what steps have been taken and are being taken to address these challenges? Because it's one thing to have, have the data in front of you. It's a whole other thing to put it to use. And I was a teacher during the beginning of what I'll call the data revolution, where we used to get packets upon packets of student learning data, and we didn't know. And we didn't know what to do with it. And so it's really important that we're using this consciously, knowingly and certainly intentionally. So I'll just give a, a quick overview, um, and just give you some insights about some of the things that we learned. Um, from the North Boulevard report. We, we were actually looking very, uh, very closely at some things we haven't normally looked at, such as, um, the importance of gender in some of the student performance. This has never been something that we've looked at. We actually saw a deficiency or edificacy, um, a discrepancy between female performance and male performance in the fifth grade and something that was very noticeable where the ELA passing rate for females was eighty-seven percent, for the males was fifty-one percent. So that, that was, that definitely caught our attention. So we need to be able to implement strategies to help reach the boys and make sure that they are like, uh, as likely, if not more likely to, to demonstrate proficiency and excellence on the assessments. And the assessments, again, are not a be-all, end-all, but they do provide, um, a strong data source about that snapshot of where students are at that point in time. Um, we, we were quite pleased with North Boulevard with the fourth graders meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA. We had forty-one percent exceed expectations. That is a very high rate. Uh, we also found that students met the standard for ELA growth and proficiency, both school-wide and among students with disabilities. And that's a really important factor amongst the students with disabilities. Um, historically, that is a group, and this is across state, uh, that has not done particularly well in standardized tests. Uh, Mrs. Stager explained it very well in her breakdown of the Hillview score reports. Um, when she was looking at the fact that we have students who are performing, uh, one or two grades below their grade level, hence the need for IEPs and more targeted instruction. But they're getting the same assessment as all of their peers. And it's really, it's not a fair playing field. We do have accommodations and modifications. But generally, it's very difficult for, um, some of our students to be able to perform on this test. Something I do like that the state gives us though, is it's not just a boilerplate, either you pass or you didn't. We get the pass, the passing rates, but we also get growth measurements. And the growth measurements look at, um, if a passing score is seven fifty, and I got a six eighty last year and I got a seven thirty-five this year. Well, I didn't pass, but I showed significant growth. Particularly, um, when compared to peers who are in that same level. You, when you see the growth numbers too, it's really hard to, um, imagine this, but that, that growth number that's given for a school at a specific grade level is one student. And that's the median student. So if I have fifty-one students in the fourth grade at North Boulevard, that median score is student twenty-six. So it's the one that they, they translate all of the data into, um, a growth measurement. It's between zero and one hundred. And that student, that middle student, um, is the score that we get. So it sounds crazy to say, wait, you're going to take a whole grade level down to one kid? You're really not. You're looking at, well, there's an equal number above and an equal number below. Um, sometimes it can give you flawed data. Um, I, I've given the example, sometimes with averages, it's difficult because if you have two hunters, one misses a deer by a foot to the right, the other misses a deer by a foot to the left. By averages, they both hit the bullseye. By reality, they're going home hungry. So we try to make sure that we look at multiple data sources and also parse out what, what's the story that's being told. Um, something else in the North Boulevard report too is, um, that Dr. Shirley addressed is that chronic absentee, chronic absenteeism as a whole, um, is something that we really need to address because we're seeing, um, increasing numbers there, particularly among our special education population. And quite simply, you need to be there in order to learn. Something else that we realized from North Boulevard too is they only have two classes for every grade level where at SJG and Hillview, it varies to one year, three the other. And that gives you less of a margin for error. If you have a group that's struggling a little bit, it's going to be amplified because you don't have as many kids, um, to give you a wider, a wider sample range. And that's a consequence of having all of our pre-K at North Boulevard, which is a function of just the reality that we have facilities-wise. But when you have six pre-K classes, it limits how many kindergartens you can bring in each year, which is why we see a lower K to five population there. Um, but some, some things that we're doing to address the challenges and you, you're going to hear some of this as being redundant is that, uh, we have teachers who are attending the Conquer Math, um, which is right in town for, for math training. They're very positive about it. We're continuing that relationship into next year and likely the year beyond. Teachers are also continuing the training with the Ready Math Program. Something that I'm really happy about too is the teachers, um, have been given the least NJSLA math questions so that they can craft assessment questions that model that type of questioning. Um, it's really important. You don't want kids to see a question format for the first time when they're taking the standardized test. You want it to be as familiar as possible so that when they, when they sit for the test in April or May, probably May, um, they're not seeing that question thinking, wait, what are they asking me? They're so familiar with it. They're like, oh, I've done this before. And it becomes almost, um, almost second nature. Hopefully they don't snap that loudly. Sorry about that. Um, something that they're doing for the English Language Arts is, um, investing in what we call high-interest nonfiction titles, um, with, um, with buddy books, which means that two or more of the books are purchased so that, um, kids can um, share the books that, that, so they can read at the same time, or they can swap them amongst their friends. But we are looking for high-interest nonfiction titles to appeal to more, uh, our boys who aren't, we feel, reading quite enough just yet. Um, we're also working very closely with the science supervisor to plan and teach lessons, uh, to help improve our fifth grade science scores. Um, and we're being, uh, more aggressive in getting the word out about student absenteeism because it's, it's a significant issue. It's a prevailing theme throughout the reports I got from all five schools. Um, and it's something that is consistent with what you're seeing in workplaces across America. Um, but it doesn't make it any easier to manage. We, we need the kids here and we need to continue placing a value on literally being here and being present for the learning.
Yeah, there was two things that you mentioned, uh, Dr. Portis. One, the, uh, the, the median student growth percentile. Which, when I looked into that, I was happy to see that we were in the range of growth for every area.
Yep.
So that makes me excited because last year, uh, like you had mentioned, we reported these scores in October. We saw growth from the previous year to this October, or last October. Um, and I'm looking forward to seeing the scores come out next year because based on what we're seeing, I anticipate seeing growth between last year and this upcoming year. The second thing is that, um, we had uh, notified the public and we had also brought up in that presentation back in October, the number of grade levels that were going to conquer math. And we had reported then in that presentation, grade one, grade four, grade five, grade six, grade seven, grade eight, and then algebra one. And I was happy to hear from, uh, Dr. Sheridan, how well that had gone and that, um, the grades that weren't going to conquer math, two and three, were going to be subject to the high-impact tutoring, which was going to be the, were funded by a, uh, a federal grant. So I'm just happy to see growth. I'm happy to see, uh, you and your team using the district resources very well to address whatever needs that there may be. And, um, I thought that was evident in what I saw in this, in the performance reports.
And, and I'll try to be a little more efficient as I talk about the other schools too. I realize I talked about North Boulevard a lot. Um, and something I'm, that I'm really enthusiastic about with all of these, but I can most specifically point to North Boulevard is Dr. Schlier is really hungry to see improvement and see growth. And, um, she's, she's not pleased with where they are right now, which is good. You should never be pleased with where you are. Um, and I explained to her too, that she'd been on the job for about three, three and a half months when these students were tested. So what I'm expecting is that we're going to make incremental gains, um, throughout the years at that school as well as beyond. And she's already, um, delivering math support because that's really her area of expertise. And I know she set something up too where she's some of her higher achieving math students asked for a math club. Well, we don't, we don't have a math club. So she's, she, she's do, yeah, she's doing one to help engage students who are really, really interested. Uh, the, the next school is, is Hillview, um, and ca- came through very well, particularly with, um, our student efficiency rates in grades four and five. Um, the, the data there for the passing rates was, was very high. Um, we're also pleased with the growth rates, which well exceeded standards compared to the state. We generally don't compare ourselves much to the state. That's the data that we have in here. We used to get the breakdown by district factor group. We don't get that anymore. And we used to get um, data broken down compared to schools that were in our, um, school performance report. They used to have comparison schools and they stopped doing that as well. Um, I'd like to take the information from those previous, um, comparison schools and find their data and, and still point out comparisons, which is something when I was principal, I used to do that. And it was, it was a great, very rewarding exercise. Um, we're also looking at, um, our, our general, our special education numbers at Hillview and we had, uh, fifty percent of our special education students meeting and exceeding standards or expectations, which may not sound like a lot, but it's a really, it's a really strong achievement. Um, and what I really like too is we're seeing growth. Um, some of our students who are in the LLD program, um, who are going to struggle with, with the standardized test formatting are working very hard and demonstrating growth. So that's something that we're, we're very proud of and something that Mrs. Stager made a reference to, and I think it's important, is this teachers having a very high understanding of the academic standards. The academic standards are essentially descriptions of skills that we want students to have in math as well as, um, language arts. I mean, there's some with technology. But it's, it's really important that teachers know what these are because those should be the objectives of the lessons. Those should be the objectives of the unit plans. Um, for areas of improvement, um, she disaggregates certain areas that we need to focus on for math. Fractions, modeling and reasoning are all really important. Um, and she also talked about, um, where we need to see, um, the ability to help students who make that shit, that transition from grade two to three, the grade three academic standards are much more intense than grade two. So we do see students sometimes having almost like a degree of, um, sticker shock when they, when they first get used to the academic rigor of third grade. Something that she's proposing and I support it is doing more vertical articulation so that the K to two teachers can talk with the grade three, four, five teachers and be able to talk about what, what do we need? What, what are, what are you seeing from the kids you're getting? What do you need to see more of? What don't you need to see? So that's something I think is, is really good. And she also addressed too, that the chronic absenteeism as it's a huge issue. Um, we realize sometimes students will be out because they're ill or they have a chronic condition. We understand that. Um, but when you, when you lose a student for a week or ten days because they're traveling, um, it's, it's tough to reconcile that because, uh, we're not going to interfere with families' plans, but our, our, our mission is to make sure the kids are educated and that seat time is so important for the educational process. Um, and then strategies, she, she wants to really address the absentee rates and, uh, there's some strategies Mr. Reiner's putting in place at SJG that he's going to share with, well, yeah, share with both Mrs. Stager and Dr. Schlieri. Um, she's looking to continue getting teacher feedback in regards to student achievement and structure of the curriculum. What do we need to refine? Something that I like about the way our curriculum is now set up and shared with teachers is that they can now make recommendations for curricular changes right on the document. Um, and so when we enter the revision process, it's going to be a much more fluid design. Um, the target, she, her exact words, targeted PZ, PD has been well received by the teachers. And then we're going to continue to provide interventions and support for struggling students. And, uh, we're working on refining our INRS process, which is very much involved in addressing specific student needs. Any, any questions from? Right? And then, um, for SJG, uh, Mr. Reiner was able to fit it on one page, but he made the font size ten. So I thought I was going to I, I, I tweaked the wording and I was able to make the font size eleven, so I can actually read it. But I was, I admired, I thought he was pretty clever, but I was also pretty annoyed. Um, but he, he's very proud of so many things going on at SJG and he talked about, um, just the student growth level, which exceeds the standard. It's going very well. He talked about how their grade level team meetings are, are, have been a particular source of assistance and they've integrated special education and ESL, which is English as a second language, um, to support the teachers as they support students. Uh, the special education population, um, met or exceeded standards in ELA at a forty-one percent passing rate. That is quite good. And then the ESL, uh, group passed it at fifty-three point eight percent. And let, let that sink in that that was for English Language Arts and these are students who are learning English as a second language. We, we now use the term English Language Learners or Multi-Language Learners. Um, but that's, that's pretty powerful. Um, that same group, our ESL students performed incredibly well in math. Eighty-four point six of them met or exceeded expectations. We are beyond proud about that. And I don't want to, um, if anybody wants to discredit that and say, well, it's, it's math. Uh, th- there's no language there. There's a lot of language. Almost all the math that they see on the assessments is now constructed as word problems. There's very little that's computational. Um, and he did address the fact that the chronic absenteeism has decreased from seven percent to three point nine percent. And so we're finding that if, if you're sending out letters letting them know, hey, you've been out for five days, you've been out for eight days, you've been out for twelve days. It can be pretty irritating getting those letters and that's part of the mission of it. And um, by really emphasizing and trumpeting the importance of being in school, um, you, you want kids to feel like, hey, it's important that, that you're here and you want them to feel like we value that you're here. And that's there was a study that was done a few years ago. It was, it was from Ohio State and they did a study on s- schools in which principals greeted students in the hallway and how that impacted student learning outcomes. And it demonstrated an improvement because principals telling the kids, I value you and I value that you're here. That's really important. Um, Mr. Reiner also wanted to look at, um, things that they can improve on in, in fifth grade. Um, they, they weren't happy with their passing rate for math. So now they're looking at the timing of instruction. So there are certain targeted skills you know are going to show up on the state test. You want to make sure that they're taught in advance of when the testing window actually opens up. Um, he also wants to target special education math. He felt like the passing rate there was, was too low for the expectations that they hold. So that's something that they're going to focus on as well. Um, including place value, spiraling skills, um, and finding strategies that work best for, for individual students. Um, and then when he was talking about, um, special ed, it's a, the, the growth there has been strong. Um, they've met the goals through the confidence interval, but they want to see increases in growth and they're going to they're going to go, they're going to look to help every student demonstrate growth that exceeds what they believe that they can do. Um, and then as far as strategies, conduct data meetings more frequently to create and monitor targeted plans for students. I've been in on a couple of these meetings. It's really great when a teacher sitting with the principal or a teacher team is sitting with the principal and they're looking at growth data for individual students and talking about strategies that are working and trying to come up with ways to see even better results and outcomes. Uh, the principals supervisors are going to conduct more walkthroughs and focus feedback based on grade level discussions, which is a great recursive effect. If you're visible too, you're going to get greater buy-in from the, um, staff. You're also going to get greater buy-in from the teachers, um, from, from the students. And then, um, he also addressed the targeted PD in language arts and math. Um, and also they're going to look at having the math and language specialists focus on some of the writing skills, which was part of what that position was originally designed to be about twelve, fifteen years ago. And we've since moved it to being exclusively with math. But so, some really great things coming out of SJG as well. Any questions there before I move on to PV?
Yeah, I just want to say again, the, I know it's your job, but the, the amount of effort that you put into this and that your staff is putting into this and going through and using this data that's available to them to really try and differentiate the instruction, which is something I learned from being on the board about what that even means. Um, is I'm impressed and I'm thankful and I can't wait to see the outcome.
And I, I really think I should get all the credit. Um, I think that's important. No, kidding. I mean, thi- this is and, and I'm so, I, I really appreciate you saying that. But yeah, this is definitely the work of, of teachers who are so focused on helping their kids. And, and I used the word hungry before and I feel like that's what they are like. All right, we, we, we're past COVID, we're past other things. What are we, what are we going to do to keep demonstrating improvement? And the fun thing about data is when you look at data as not a gotcha, but we got your back kind of thing. It, it, it's supportive for students and it's supportive for staff members. And when you see your kids demonstrating growth, you can't help but feel really good about it. So I, I was so happy too because I gave the principals, um, almost a week on the nose that they had to turn this over. And I wanted them to feel uncomfortable about what they had to generate here because not everything in the reports is particularly good. A lot of it's great, but not all of it is. And s- some of it's good, but could be better. And I wanted them to confront that and they worked with the supervisors, they worked with the directors, they worked with each other. And um, I, I, I'm, I'm really excited about because they, they gave some really specific things. And I joke with you guys about how I love geeking out on data and I really do. And so to see that I'm working with like-minded individuals i- i- is really exciting. And the benefit isn't just that we can look and say, oh, we went from twenty-three to thirty-two percent this metric. Okay. But that you can see like, that's connected to kids and, 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 and hard work from teachers. So it really matters. And, and so much of it too is the support that they're getting from home. And, and this, that, none of this exists in a vacuum. So it really is, it's, it's a huge team effort. Again, I should get all the credit, but I think, you know, I'll divvy some of it up.
Dr. Portis, I've, I have a question as they're going through and bringing together, and I agree with, um, Mr. Senic. It's, it's great. Um, I know that we've brought in several new technology platforms, lack of a better term, over the last few years. Are we looking at this data and looking at that data and seeing if it aligns and if it's telling us the same story? Is it not telling us the same story? Like, is some, have we sort of done that overlay yet or is that sort of step two? Like is some, have we sort of done that overlay yet or is that sort of step two and, and sort of how will we be using that to sort of help further this?
It's, it's a great question and there's really a multi-layered response to that and it's almost like there's a sort of yes as the answer. We, we have been looking at the data, you, uh, the data behind the usage of the technology platforms and some of that, a lot of that's for, for budgeting purposes. Cause we don't want to invest in something if one teacher's using it and it's redundant with something that thirteen teachers are using. So we'll, we'll look to combine those. But something, I, I remember we talked about a couple of years back when we started using the I ready. We saw if students were using I ready at a higher proficiency level, it didn't matter how they were doing, as long as they were doing it. Though that same class had a higher rate of achievement on the NJ SLA. So what I want to look at is when we get the scores for this year and we'll get the preliminary data right around the time when we dismiss. And then we'll have July to really dig into it. But I, I am really interested in that and our new I T supervisor, Matt Shea. Has been really great about finding different capabilities behind some of the technology resources that we have. And it's great because he'll, he'll explain something to Dr. Sheridan and me and we find ourselves nodding our heads politely and being like, I, I, I don't completely get it. But then he'll break it down even more for us. So I raised, I could have given a very short answer, but I'm not good at that. We, we see the effectiveness of what we're using and we want to be able to quantify and point to things and say. What our dad is telling us is that there's a causality. You use this, you get this outcome. Some of them might be correlational, but we're going to dive into that more with the, the new data that we get this year. So come, well, actually in about a month's time, the kids are going to be testing and they're turning that data over pretty quick for us. You're welcome. Self-help. I thought I was, I thought I was fired up when the wrestling coach was talking. Now I'm getting really fired up. Absolutely. This, this is my martial man moment. So for P V, one of the things that we're really, I'm happy about is we outperformed state and all in E L A and math in every grade level, which is great. We don't have other comparisons, so we can't make those yet, but I'd like to get some more of that data as it's released for other school districts. Something that, that can fly under the radars are Algebra One outperformed state average by sixty-one percent. That's a massive number and we're not alone. Generally, our students who have tested very well will take the algebra assessment in eighth grade. And that does hurt our eighth, our eight, grade eight NJ SLA math score, but then our Algebra One among eighth graders tends to be good. Here it's really good. Our proficiency did increase. Our growth didn't match that, but our proficiency is definitely up. We're seeing E L A growth continuing. And we have a very high percentage of students in both grades, seven and eight, exceeding expectations. They're at thirty-nine percent. And that's that five score. That's the highest level you can get. And Mr. Seabraski used the exact terminology about what we need to address. He wants to see vertical articulation from the fifth to the sixth grade. It's a little hard to coordinate that from a logistics perspective, because we have three different schools that we need to bring together with P V. But just because it's difficult doesn't mean we won't do it. We just got to find a way to roll coverage. So this way we can get. Maybe all of our fifth grade teachers together with the sixth grade team. We'll pay the price of subs, but it, it'll, it'll be worth it because they'll have an opportunity to really meet and, and discuss. And talk about specific student learning needs that they need to be addressing. We want to make sure that the, the marking period grades are aligned to actual student performance. You don't want to see a kid who's getting all A's, but then can't perform well on, on a standardized assessment. And likewise, you don't want to see a kid getting crushed on grades and do really well on the standardized assessment because. You want to see some degree of consistency there. Do you want to have multiple measures? So you don't, they don't need to be identical, but you do want to see those aligned. So you want to be mindful of inflation or excessively high standards there. We're going to continue to focus our alignment and assessment models with the state learning standards. Use the terminology, which I love, the unpacking of standards in each grade level. You really do want to unpack them slowly so that you can understand what each standard really means. Standards are largely unchanged since the rollout of the Common Core standards back two thousand thirteen. But there's an awful lot there and we want to make sure that teachers understand the depth of, of the language. We're going to look to cut out anything that doesn't really matter. My note to myself is it's almost like cutting the fat from some of the instructional design that we have in place. Want to make sure that we're, we become more effective at developing instructional groupings. Benchmark data really helps with that. You want to have data-driven instructional practice so that I know if I'm breaking students up into smaller groups, I can do so. Either heterogeneously or homogeneously. And then keep, just as they've made incredible strides with code of conduct concerns from la- last year to this year. They really want to target attendance for that as well. And we want to look at the impact of staff attendance on student performance. Staff attendance on student attendance and student attendance on student performance. The last of those is probably the most, the most relevant. Both he, both Mr. Seabraski and Ms. Ringan are very excited about implement or instituting home rooms next year. I'll admit they caught me off guard. I didn't think anybody would be excited about home rooms, but they, they feel like they can do some really great things with that short little period of time. They want to have something of Punctual Panthers award. So if a classroom is a hundred percent in home room on time and present, there can be a certain type of award there. Yeah, I like that one a lot. We want to do monthly themes and creating visuals for students to see statistics about the breakdown of attendance to try to really build that up. Instead of making it a negative statement of don't be absent. No, why don't we make a positive statement? Hey, you're here. That's great. So keep focusing on, again, getting them in. And we want to communicate with, with parents about the importance of this and it can't just be, you send something out. In an obligatory message in early September saying, make sure the kids are here. It's really important. Keep reinforcing that message because. The truth is, this is a much different world from the world of two thousand nineteen. And we're seeing it in every workplace in America and throughout the world. And there's not as much of an emphasis on being onsite, being in the place, but we want, but for schools, it's really, really important. So we're going to, we're going to really stress that, as you can probably tell from across the schools. We think that the change, the proposed change in the schedule is going to allow us to use our instructional minutes a lot more precisely and a lot more efficiently. Which will enhance student engagement as well as student focus, which has a great ripple effect to student behavior. We want to use a, a reinforcement block at the end of the day that we've never had before at the middle school level. Students can be required to go to these reinforcement periods. They're going to be assigned where to go. We're looking at that as an opportunity for teachers to focus on. The example I gave today in the HSA president's meeting, if, if I had to do now as my students were exiting. Period five math, I can look at the data and break them into groups. Okay, these guys have mastered the concept. These guys have a good idea of the concept. These guys need help. Well, you've got kids coming in for the reinforcement block. The kids who really need help, how are you going to help them? Are you going to take two of the kids from the, the high achieving group to be peer tutors for it? Are you going to help that group yourself? Teachers are going to have options about how to work with these smaller groups and we're very excited about that. We want to make sure that that reinforcement block doesn't feel like a study hall. For those of us who went to high school in the eighties or nineties. You'll know that study hall wasn't always a particularly productive environment. We want to make sure that these are productive and focused. He also included in there vertical alignment and they're also looking to implement an E L A, a book club. Unit in, in every English class. It's great readers workshop model. And he again, talked about the professional development through conquer math. That's the one that's been. It, it, it showed up on all of these, uh, which tells me it, it's working really well. And then finally, the high school. Mr. Hayes are focused on, coming out of the gate, focused on algebra improvements of students. Meeting or exceeding expectations and algebra jumped from twenty-two point four to forty-five percent. That is a huge increase in the number of students demonstrating proficiency. We pretty much doubled it. And we're only going to continue to grow from that. And then in geometry, we saw an increase from sixty-three point eight percent passing to eighty point four, which is also really, really strong. And our overall math proficiency rate went up from thirty-seven percent to fifty-six point one percent. And we've really been focusing a lot on math this year. So we're, we're anticipating that we're going to see. Even better rates of growth when I report out on this data in October and then probably later in the year, uh, for next school year. Uh, grade nine, language arts scored really well on the state testing. And Mr. Hayes was also very happy. The number of students, uh, meeting or exceeding expectations in language arts went up from. The target score, which is twenty-six point four, we saw thirty-four point six of our kids meeting or exceeding expectations in language arts. And then something that he pointed out, and I'm glad he dug this deep into the report. We have fifty-three and a half percent of our students in grades eleven and twelve enrolled in dual enrollment courses. And a dual enrollment course allows you to earn college credits while you're taking high school classes. It is a phenomenal thing. What he didn't include in here, and I think is really good too, is over half of the kids in our school are taking A P classes. And the passing rate on the A P tests, I think was seventy-one point four percent. I have it in the, in the larger report. And then another just really small detail there too is. The state average for students with I E Ps taking at least one A P class is four point five percent. P T H S average is over twenty percent. That tells me that we're focused not only on making sure that students are achieving at a high level and passing the test. But that more students have that opportunity to take A P courses and that's a huge equity matter and it's incredibly important. I did most of my dissertation about this. I'm, I'm very, very proud of that. He didn't, he didn't include the part about the, uh, the A P enrollment, but. I'm, I'm excited to talk about it. What do we need to address? Well, we, we, we need to increase our number of students who are meeting the target in mathematics for our students with disabilities. He want, he wants to see us, well, where we've remained consistent, E L A performance, E L A's English language arts, which is the most important content area. He wants to see an increase in that in terms of students meeting or exceeding expectations. Something he included in there that, that, that. Almost hurt me was that the number of tenth and eleventh grade students taking the P S A T was seventy-three percent. Which I, 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 I hard, I have a hard time reconciling that. That should be a hundred percent. The P S A T is a phenomenal assessment. Whether you're taking the S A T is almost immaterial. It's a really good assessment. It gives you just great learning data. This is something we really focused on when I came here as a teacher back in two thousand and seven. But we need to get the sophomores taking that test and it is a consequence-free environment. You could get completely crushed on the test and doesn't matter. We just want to see where are you right now so that we can target supports for you. The junior year one, there's a little more skin in the game because you could qualify for national merit scholarship money and it is leading into the first time you'll take the S A T for real.
Yep. Have you, have you looked at when that start, excuse me, when that started to decline? Was it all at once? Did you, have we seen a, a few percentage point dip each year over year?
You know, I, I, I don't, I don't know. And that's, that's a great one we can look at is, is see the participation level through the years. We are going to make it so that sophomores and juniors can take the tests for free. So that, that, that can't be a factor that's inhibiting whether they take it. We have the in-school P S A T. So it can't be, oh, I gotta come here on a Saturday. I'm busy. It's fall. I'm playing football, playing soccer, I'm banned, whatever it might be. So we want to make sure that all of them are taking it and working to the best of their abilities. I guess the working to the best of the abilities is almost secondary. Get them in there, get them in their seat. They'll take it seriously.
How can we find out why, like why somebody chose not to?
We could survey the kids.
We survey them like a stress-free way just to say, just listen. No judgment.
I, I would think it has to do with sports. Some of it has to do with sports.
Sports have always been here.
I, I, I wouldn't be surprised. I'll be honest, when, when I came here, I, I started in this district as a teacher in two thousand and seven. And when I saw the two thousand and six P S A T data, I think we had two or three sophomores take the P S A T. I was like, what? And I, I came here from Northern Highlands, Bergen County. And we had almost a hundred percent of sophomores taking the P S A T. Like it was just, that was the culture. You did that. So we may have lost traction during COVID and we have to regain it. And I don't want to, I don't want to commit death by testing. So I understand there has to be a limit to how much testing the kids do, but this one's really, really important. And I think we need to reinforce that and really build that up. And then he, he brought up the, the state science assessment, which unfortunately the kids don't take terribly seriously, but we, we want to make sure that. They understand your name's on it. Take it seriously. Perform to the best of your abilities. And he, he mentioned again, chronic absenteeism, which is below state average, well below state average, but still continues to impact student performance. And then in terms of strategies to build on strengths, said continue our practice of classroom walkthroughs for the focus on questioning and assessment practices in math. Point out that I'm turning the page on a one-page document. Focus standards-based writing instruction at, at the grade nine level, which I think is fantastic, especially if we have standards-aligned rubrics, which helps students see. These are the things you need to be able to do as a young writer or as any kind of writer. We are, as we discussed, we're looking to modify the schedule. Which will allow for more support time for students who need supplemental instruction in E L A and math, as well as potentially other areas. He also included more of the vertical articulation, which is where people in grades nine talk to people who are teaching grade ten, as well as teachers in grade eight. You want to see that where they feel like they're connected. And then he also included something about offering S A T and P S A T bootcamps in October and March. I'll take it one step further. If you do want in August, it's a great way to reach kids when they're coming back. I know. A lot of kids will hear that, like, oh, way to wrap up the summer. But I used, that, I used to do that. I used to offer S A T courses last week in August and, and it was a great way to help kids. Get, get ready for what they're going to see, whether P S A T or S A T. But overall, my summary is that we have a culture in this district of focusing on student achievement. And really relentlessly supporting them for that. We need to address the absentee issue to be sure and, and we will do that in, in a positive and meaningful way. And I'm, I'm, I'm pleased with the outcomes here, but certainly not content with them, nor do I think anybody should be content with where they are. There's always room for growth and. We will achieve it.
That was a great report. Thank you. Anybody have any further questions on that?
You repeat that?
Do you want me to give the full four? I just, I talked for forty minutes. Sorry about that.
I mean, it's a very important topic and I'm sure that when the, the parents see the reports on the website, they, they're looking for some insight onto them. So you gave them that. So it's. Very good job. Okay. Next up is C I S and we have two items for discussion, A P R S or grant update and the curriculum writing process.
And, uh, Dr. Sheridan gave me some prepared comments for this, which will keep me well under the forty-minute point. As far as the, the ARP S R update. As a result of the pandemic, the federal government allocated money through a series of grants, three of them that were designed to address student learning gaps resulting from the pandemic. With these funds, we were able to host three summer learning academies. Unfortunately, those monies have now ended. And as a result, we will not be able to host a summer learning academy this year. Hopefully we think it's something we, we can reinstitute, but can't do it this year. And we appreciate the staff who taught during those sessions and we're pleased to provide additional support to those students who participated. I'll put it out there too. We also appreciate the kids who showed up and the parents who made sure that they showed up. Because I can imagine getting a teenager out of the house in July to go to school for math support probably is not the easiest thing in the world. And then from Dr. Sheridan, we will continue to look for ways to address learning gaps for all our students. We target instructional practices and other potential grant opportunities such as the Learning Acceleration Grant slash. Learning Acceleration Program slash High Impact Tutoring Grant for our grades three to four students. And the reason it's grades three to four is that's what the state gave us the money for. We're finding that that, that group that was in kindergarten, uh, when COVID really blew up, that's the group that's struggling the most. And so I'm glad that the state is, is, is channeling money to support the kids who really, really need the help. Any questions about that first item?
Yeah, Dr. Portis, uh, the, the learning academies, that's different than the extended school year program?
Correct.
That's still running.
Yeah, yeah. The extended school year program is actually I, I E P or I, well, I D E A mandated, but it's through the I E P. So we'll continue to have that. That runs for I think twenty school days and that, that started July, generates stuff by, by the time August rolls around. But that one's still in place. Yeah, if we eliminated that, I'd be in big trouble and rightly so. And then there's also a note about the curriculum writing process. We want to take the opportunity to explain the curriculum writing approval process involving the development, approval and publication of curriculum. First, we identify the guides that need revision or creation. Generally, this is on a five-year cycle. Sometimes you'll get a standards update that forces you to alter your trajectory or alter your plans. We very much appreciate those unfunded mandates from the state. It's irony. We, we really don't, but we, we. We make sure that we're in compliance with, with whatever rolls out, but we do have a plan in place for when to review and revise. And the second thing is we, we seek out writers. We do this through soliciting them through emails, through the staff updates. And then also there's a hard copy posted in each school. And that second part is actually part of the collective bargaining agreement. First part is just really good practice. The writers are then approved during an action meeting. I think we've got a handful of them coming up at the second. The writers are then approved during an action meeting. I think we've got a handful of them coming up at the second meeting in April, along with the agreed amount, generally depending on the complexity of the writing. If it's a simple revision, you might see three days. If it's a little more involved, you might see six. And then the actual creation can be anywhere from five to ten days. It's something I will say, I think that Dr. Sharon's done a nice job with is she she's expanded the amount of time that she's giving people to write the curriculum, which I think helps to get more people interested in doing it. Sometimes I I used to write curriculum, you would be given five days to write it, and it would take you eighty hours. But you did it because it needed to get done, and you wanted it done well. Then fourth, when the when the guide is submitted to the Director of Curriculum Instruction, it will be reviewed. Once satisfied, the director will download a PDF of the course for board of board review, something that's not stated there too, but it's also in the process supervisors are reviewing it as they go. So they make sure it's a good copy before it goes to the director. Then five, once satisfied, the board will notify the director and the guide will appear on the agenda for final approval. Subsequent publication to the district curriculum blueprint page. Publication will most often be during the summer for the upcoming school year. And only in very unusual circumstances will a curriculum be published during the school year and replace the one currently used. You try to avoid that because it looks like you're changing the rules after the game started.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any questions on CIS? All right, moving on to FFA, four discussion items, two RFPs, one for the district attorney and the other for the auditor, and then live streaming and the reconditioning of the baseball and softball field.
The RFP for the school districts attorney went out on March twenty eighth. And this evening, before the board meeting, the board interviewed four law firms. And a decision will be made and approved at the the May thirteenth board meeting. Excuse me, the April twenty ninth board meeting. The RFP for the school's auditor, that was advertised, and the we're expecting to have the proposals back by April eighteenth. And that will be put on the May thirteenth board meeting for approval.
And there was two topics that I asked Gordon about earlier in the week. I was approached until that we were live streaming the outdoor sports. I mean, other than the turf field, the ball fields. Turns out that we are not, that there is actually a student who has his own channel and has covered some of the home game, two home softball games. And will do as many as he could in his in his time. And in terms of the ball field reconditioning, that originally was going to be scheduled like right when the school was ending, but now because of weather conditions, it has to start in September, which doesn't matter. There's no full sports on there anyway. And the it helps a solid take and all that, so that'll be, I'm excited to have the ball fields redone, and that'll start in September.
Okay, any questions on that?
So I'm sorry, are we looking to livestream the sports or it was just somebody with a student was doing it just to do it?
Yeah, I just asked because I wanted to know if it was part of our original agreement, if we're paying more. And he said Gordon advised that we're not, we're not entering into any agreement, just it's just a student that's doing it, which is pretty cool.
Yeah, it's really nice.
Yeah, the student, he did a whole bunch of hockey games in the in the winter season, too. He's really good. It was a lot of fun listening to him.
I'll 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 put it out there that he'll be at Montclair State next year, so he's not going terribly far. So if if there is interest in live streaming a few of the generally not livestreamed events, perhaps an agreement can be reached. I'm not going to look to my left because this is not in the budget, and I know Mr. Gibbs is probably going to be quite irritated with me, but just something to consider.
What was the name of the channel again?
Yeah, TJK, I'm sorry, TJK Network.
Yes.
Really awesome that he does that.
Yeah, okay. Next item is policy. We have no discussion items, but we do have a slew of policies that'll be up for a second reading and adoption next month if anyone wants to discuss them.
Yeah, these were, uh, these all came to a previous workshop, and then we did first reading. So unless there's something new that has come up, I think they've been discussed to the extent they're necessary to discuss.
These were pretty compliance heavy.
All right, moving on, board effect in this committee. So two items to discuss. Tim is not here, so I'll take it. So the goal of the board, one of our stated goals, is to achieve Carol Larson Master Board Certification. We've we've received our board certification. Now we are endeavoring to achieve master board certification, which means that within the next two years after you receive board certification, you have to take ten more credits, ten more hours of board training as a team, along with the superintendent, to receive that certification. So what I've done is, and I sent this out to the board, is to lay out a schedule of which meetings going forward that we will receive this training at. And one aspect of this that's difficult to to plan is we need to have training given to us by the NGSBA. So we need to have Charlene Peterson come to one of our meetings. And since she covers a wide area, she's highly in demand. So that being stated, the next meeting, four twenty nine, we will have board training. The meeting on five twenty eight, we will have board training. The meeting on six ten, we will have board training. And the meeting on, we will have our summer retreat on eight twelve. And then we'll have another, our last board training session will be nine sixteen. And this will put us from where we are now to where we will be in September at eleven credits. So we will be able to get what would we be able to accomplish in two years done in one year. And the main reason why I want to do this this year is because I want this board as it is right now to achieve that certification. I think that this board's worked very hard and started the process of the first certification. And I think it's only right that this board finishes it as a whole. And I know that Ms. Dempsey, you're not going to be running for reelection, and I do not want somebody else to sit in the picture to receive a certification that you should receive. So we are going to finish this this year because that's that's the right thing to do, and it's the proper thing to do, and you certainly have earned it, and you deserve it. So the reason why I bring this up is because I want to make sure that everyone can mark their calendars because there is a certain amount of board members that need to be present for the training for the training to count. So again, wanted to put it out there planned, and I want everyone to be aware of what dates we're going to need scheduled, what dates we have training on. And we can talk about what we'll train on at those meetings, but this is the plan. So if anyone has any questions on it or comments, I'd be.
The only comment I'm going to have is five twenty eight, we are now off. Is that a meeting? Can we still meet?
We we could still meet that night, yes.
We could meet, I mean.
Yeah, we could meet. I just want to make sure.
You know, I don't want to speak for everybody, but if we're all away, are you going to be home by seven o'clock on Tuesday night? I'm saying if you were going away, if you're going away for the weekend. You just, you know.
I I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure that we can have a meeting in those four spots.
No, we we can slide, and besides, I'm going to tell my wife I'm going to work that day anyway, so I'll I'll be here.
Anybody else? All right. So the second point of me passing out the schedule, and I know you guys are just thrilled to hear me talk about this, is to plan the CSA evaluation process as well as to plan the board self evaluation process. So the schedule that the committee laid out opens the CSA evaluation process in May. And it's tied to board meetings, but it doesn't necessarily have to be tied to board meetings. So the process will open up after Dr. Portis submits his evidence of the growth and his evidence to his progress towards his goals. Once he submits that, which he will do by May, we will then open up the CSA evaluation, chief school administrator evaluation to each one of you guys, as we do every year, and then we'll expect that back from you by June. Then in June, we will meet to have a conference and summarize what we think is our action plan or recommendations to Dr. Portis. And then we will present that to him. Once that's completed, at the end of June, we will then open up the board, the board self evaluation that we did last year once again. And we will complete that in July before our summer retreat in August so that we can then discuss it. And the portion of that evaluation and that retreat will be towards our goals and how we're doing towards the goals that we set at the beginning of the year. So anybody have any questions on that?
I I do. More of a, more of a old business, new business, but not year, that year statement. Last year, we talked about putting together some sort of board rubric for doing the CSA evaluation. I would really like for us to do that before we actually sit down to fill it out. So we're really talking apples to apples, not apples to oranges amongst ourselves, if we could maybe set you know, time aside at a workshop meeting prior to that.
Yeah, that's a good point, and I think we could probably have Charlene Peterson provide training on how to do that certification, right? And maybe we can talk to her about that, and then we could develop it before we start, so absolutely.
Great, thank you.
You might. Anybody else? Okay, that brings us to our next opportunity for public comment. This portion of the meeting, members of the public can speak for a maximum period of five minutes about any topic that they wish. And if a member does raise a question, please direct it to the board president and state your name and sign in before you begin.
Good evening. My name is Janelle McGowan, thirty two William Street, Paquonic. First, I'd like to congratulate Sophia Clutcha. She's in my daughter's class, and I've known her since kindergarten. So kudos to Sophia Clutcha. The other thing is directed to, yes, the board president, but more or less to Dr. Portis about something that I brought up several times about the homework free weekend that has implemented in the town that I work in. I truly thought it would have started back in March last month, and it still hasn't. So I'm wondering where we are with that with stigma free and that homework free weekend. And then I would like to address the board to please come out and see the musical Beauty and the Beast. My daughter is in the show. I'm not going to say who she is in the show, but please come out to come see Beauty and the Beast. Thank you.
I I will say, Ms. McGowan, I am planning to go to see Beauty and the Beast. I do not know who your daughter is, but I'm sure I'll be floored by her performance, and it'll be great. All right, I will. John Nacian, high school music parents. Our winter guard performed in Barnegat this past weekend. It took first place and had their highest score of the season by ten points. So hopefully, they can carry that into their championships this Sunday in Trenton. Our indoor percussion persevered through a tough season, all new student leadership, new staff leadership. And congratulations to them on a on a great season. Mr. Strifer took his concert band class to perform in the New Jersey State Concert Band Festival at Hanover Park High School. And he was extremely proud to share at our our parents' meeting. It was the first gold rating by a group from this school in history. And he was especially proud because his is a, an open concert band class where a lot of the other groups, ensembles performing are from these regional schools with four music teachers and audition wind orchestras and, you know, all types of competitive groups. So he was really proud of his kids there. Beauty and the Beast tech rehearsals begin tomorrow in this room. So this is more to the menace in the back of the room. But we're just looking for minimal manipulation to the lighting, sound system setup and things like that until the shows are complete, and I'm sure Mr. Schultz knows all that. But I'd just like to put that on record as well, because they'll be working four, five, six hours a night until the end of the show. Dr. Portis already announced the show dates. I did have a question about the the fields being redone come the fall. I just wanted to know which fields those were on the on the property here, just to pass that along to the the marching band staff. They do 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 a lot of their drill practices out there, so if they, if we have to set them up somewhere else, we'll paint lines somewhere else. And then there was a question at the end of the, or comment at the end of the the last meeting regarding marching band alumni parents searching out donations from from that contingent. And we have a very strong support from our alumni parents, many of them, I guess you could say inherited, sort of like an administrative fee somewhere in their time here. And they've just continued to pay that. I mean, some of the names, I don't even recognize. That's how long that they've just been, you know, giving back to to the to the program. And then a lot of parents also donate starter money for our big fundraisers, like the home show, our tricky tray, things of that nature, just to to get the ball rolling. So parents aren't pulling money out of their pockets to to get the fundraisers rolling type of thing, okay? Because we pay for all the programs and write all their things they're doing anyway, but all right, thanks.
How much are the tickets for Beauty and the Beast?
Dollars for students, fifty dollars for adults.
Okay, and do you have, can you preorder them or are you at the door?
They're on our store.
They're at your store?
Yeah, they're on our online store.
Online store, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, just to answer your question about the fields, it's just going to be the baseball field and the softball field. No, they're they're regrading the baseball and the softball field to provide proper drainage.
They're not doing the outfield. Right, that's that's because you guys are in the outfield. They march in the outfield where the field hockey and soccer sometimes practice, right?
All right, that.
Can I just have a quick question, follow up? Sorry, I apologize. When it says that you have a maintenance reserve account for Paquonic Valley School, the middle school, my question is, what is that money going towards at the middle school as far as maintenance?
That covers all aspects of maintenance in the school, including boilers, windows, whatever the school may need. And that's approved every year around November through what's called the M one form, and that's approved by the state. And it's required, it's required maintenance, okay?
So just a quick, quick response. I I shared the congratulations, Sophia, pretty interesting. Her daughter, whose name I'm not allowed to say out loud, was part of my first kindergarten class at at Hillview, so there's a lot of meeting there. They're currently sophomores. As far as the question directed me about the homework free weekend, yep, we're looking to do one. I am not going to tell you the date yet because I have to tell the staff first. When I first rolled it out, three of the schools were completely indifferent to the idea. We're like, do it anytime. But that's the elementaries. For the high school, I'm not going, we can't do one between now and the APs unless we have it almost like a caste system where kids who are taking APs have homework and kids who don't not have homework. And I, to me, that seems a touch counterintuitive, so we're going to clear the APs. And then we do have a weekend in place. I just want to make sure the staff is aware of it before it announces to the public. It's bad practice to tell the public first, then staff second, which I've learned these things as most things are learned the hard way. Yep, and then certainly agree with the encouragement to see Beauty and the Beast, and I believe it's a seven o'clock performance on Thursday, seven o'clock on Friday, three o'clock on Saturday. Excellent. And I'd like, I looked over to both you for affirmation, and I got it. That's good. And then as far as the the performances, Um, and then as far as the, the performances, uh, I'm happy to hear the kids are doing great, I mean, the. Winner, the winner guard going to Barnegat and then to Trenton, I hope, I hope they're, uh, they're getting mileage credit for that, because that's some, some pretty far drives. But that's, it's really fantastic. Um, I love hearing about, um, how we're performing in these state competitions. I feel like, um, anybody who really likes the movie Hoosiers kind of feels like we're the Hickory of the marching band world. And small school that just keeps achieving at a, at a really large level. Um, one thing, just a quick update about the lights, um, Don Harrison from our maintenance department was working up on the lights today. With Mr. Arnold, Mr. Arnold was at ground level, Mr. Harrison was up there, um, but getting direction about, about the lights. So, um, want to understand, they put about ninety minutes in and, and feel really confident that everything's lined up and should be. In, in really good place. As far as the field reconditioning, Senec answered it much better than I would have, so I'm happy that he answered. Uh, and I'm glad to hear that the alumni parents feel that connection as well. That speaks volumes about your program, when people's kids graduate out and they still feel compelled to be a part of it. Means it really resonates deeply with them. I'm not surprised, but I just wanted to reinforce, I think that's great.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business, any board member have any unfinished business?
So I have just in like casual conversations discovered that people who are not as embedded in the school start time issue. As those of us at this table are still not entirely aware that, of the details of what's happening in September. And the potential schedule changes that you were actually speaking about tonight with the reinforcement block at the middle school. So I was just curious what our communication plan is like on a very large scale. Beyond the, I know we've done a lot of informative sessions and we've talked about it at these meetings a lot, but for the audience that is not paying attention to those things. When and how are we getting that out?
Yeah, and, um, we're, we're working on refining the final, uh, pieces of the high school schedule. We're trying to ensure that we have something that, um, honors the existing collective bargaining agreement. Um, and also provides the best possible learning experiences for our kids. Um, I've actually created, I, I, I would think, I think about fourteen different schedules that, that. Fall under that umbrella in varying degrees, but, um, timeline that we're looking at, because we really do have to get it out there is. Um, probably within the next two weeks, um, schedule a parent university. And that would be something with a staggered time, so we do a six thirty. PV, schedule parent university and then a seven o'clock for the high school. The high school one will probably take about an hour. It sounds like I'm making a dig at Mr. Hazler for talking longer, but I'm not. The high school one is much more involved. PV one is a little, little more straightforward and a little simple. The high school one involves actually moving the start time back by. By, by thirty-six minutes. We're also going to have podcasts to accompany that, because I've, I've heard that I am the latest sensation in the podcasting world. It's not, that, that, that's not really true, but, uh, but we find that that is an effective way to be able to communicate the message out. We'll do one for the, for the middle school and for the high school. So where we are with the, the high school schedule, probably I'd say about ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent of the way done. And I, I want to get it presented, so if it does change, I, I think we'll present it with the caveat of. Subject to minor tweaks, minor adjustments, but the integrity of it is, is in place. But yeah, we'll, we'll make sure we get the word out, um, if anybody's tuning in, um, we're going to start the high school later next year.
No, like I'm not even kidding though, so, and I appreciate all of that for the details. But even just like in the email that goes out every week, starting it with, don't forget, school will be starting at eight oh five. In September or whatever, honestly, like off the top of my head, I was like, wait, I don't know what the sign is. Like one sentence to the people who will only read eight sentences, so they know. Because the, I mean, we know the attendance at parent universities is low. I think your podcast is, is broadcasting phenomenally around the world, but just for those who aren't watching, like, yeah.
Well, as, as I made a reference in my most recent one from Friday, I think I have tens and tens of followers, so.
Yeah, 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 so, you know.
Neck and neck.
Just so the other fifteen hundred families are aware.
Anybody else, any unfinished business? I got one thing, um, I should, probably should have said it under the, uh, board effectiveness committee item, but, um, we are working on. The board updates and the board, uh, progress updates, and we want to see from Dr. Portis. So I did take the information that I solicited from all of you, I gave it to Dr. Portis and. Dr. Portis is working on putting that into a schedule format that we can then bring back to all of us and we could comment on, so expect to see that in the next couple of months. That's it. Any new business? Board member announcements?
I'll share, I went to, um, PTHS National Honor Society Ceremony. It was amazing, um, congratulations to all of those students and their, you know, their high achievement. Um, but it was a beautiful ceremony, really enjoyed it.
I was, uh, wanted to share that I was graciously invited, uh, on March twenty eighth to speak to the allied health seniors. Not for being a board of vet member, but before my, uh, day job, uh, in the medical device industry. I focused on medical devices that are used, actually, we did it here in this room. A hands-on presentation on medical devices that are used in the cardiac cath lab space. Uh, and in spite of it being the last day prior to spring break, the seniors were very engaged. Uh, had lots of great questions, some of them funny, some of them very serious. And I, I did it to two different groups and I have to compliment both groups, because the second group was about five minutes before the pep rally. And I was shocked that they asked even one question, uh, to my very boring presentation, but I, I wanted to thank the students for their engagement. And the teachers, uh, for setting it up and giving me the time.
And I probably should have said some, and, uh, this could have been unfinished business, but, uh, I met with the. Few reps from Pomtonia during the HSA president's meeting that we had this morning, we, we meet monthly. And they had asked if they could meet with the HSA to get a sense for how things are going, talk about what they're doing and also try to get ideas for how they can. Turn up more interest in the food service. It was a very, very positive experience. Um, we're really trying to help them partner with the homeschool associations for ongoing two-way communication. I know complaints should get directed to Mr. Gibbs, rightly so, but, um, in terms of ideas, I really want to see a really fluid exchange of ideas. Between parents, uh, as well as food service, they're very receptive to it. And I did let them know that we're going to use the same survey that we used earlier in this year. When we had a different organization here and use the same exact questions to, to get a sense for, uh, how the community feels about, uh, food service right now. Just two other quick things, um, for anybody who celebrates, today is Patriots Day, so if you live in Massachusetts or Maine, you wouldn't be in school today. Get the day off, um, but I made sure where my, my blue and yellow for the Boston Marathon. Of course, the Red Sox lost, but that's just. Details, details. Um, and then for anybody who was wondering about my, my finger injury from the PB hoops game. I, I got it taped up, I was doing okay. Um, I, I was supposed to rest it, which I didn't do, but, um, it was all worth it because the staff won. Um, against the PB students in the basketball game, so I suffered for my art, but it was worth it.
And hopefully you got a higher advantage in that one, but, so I, I have a couple, uh, announcements. First, I, I listened to your, I listened to your latest podcast with the students, uh, reviewing nineteen eighty-four. I should say I, I watched it, I didn't listen to it. That one was very interesting to watch as opposed to listen to, because you could see the engagement and I was. It was probably one of the best ones, um, because it involved the students, but they were very insightful, I was, I was very impressed, so I thought that was a really good one. Um, on three twenty-four, I attended the Eagle Scout Ceremony for Jacob Goldbeck and Nathaniel Criffield. Uh, Jacob installed the informational kiosk at the bench at the Paquonic Historical Rail Station. And Nathaniel refurbished the grounds in front of PB around the Panther. Ceremony was great, and I know you guys all remember, we honored them previously at a board meeting, but I told them again how proud we were of them. And I urged them to be a continued example to others, so again, congratulations to both Jacob and to Nathaniel. Uh, four-three, I attended another master class given by the NGSBA on board leadership. And this was the fourth of five classes I attended. The topic for this class was AI and how districts are starting to plan to adopt policy to guide its use. So I figured that'd be something we can talk about in the future. Um, and once the meeting materials are put out, I'll give them to everyone so they can start to, uh, look over them. Overall, it's a very interesting series, there's one more to go in, uh, May. Uh, last, on four-eleven, I attended the Veterans Wall Committee, um, part of that committee with Mr. Blumer. Uh, at that meeting, we discussed subcontractor scopes, now that we're starting to get donations and the progress of the donations. We started to talk about how we can allocate those donations to certain scopes to make sure that we get a complete project. And I have to say, the generosity of Paquonic once again is unmatched. And the, uh, the amount of donations and the things that we're getting from people is just really impressive, so thank you for that.
I just want to acknowledge, well, first I want to say that we are ahead of the ball on the AI policy thing, because we put that into policy. I believe it was last summer, so kudos to us. April is Autism Acceptance Month, and I know some of the schools were doing different activities around that. So I just wanted to show appreciation to staff members and students who are participating in those. Um, and also the New Jersey State Board of Education had passed a resolution recognizing April as. School Library Month in New Jersey, so thank you to all of our school media specialists and librarians. Who are keeping great books in the hands of our kids and doing amazing other things beyond that, like teaching them how to use AI effectively. And all sorts of technology and information literacy skills.
Alright, uh, we do have a reason to go into executive session tonight, we will discuss student matters, no action will be taken and we will adjourn from there. Our next meeting is April twenty ninth here at the high school, and that meeting will feature a presentation on our budget for the next school year. As well as training for the board master certification I spoke about earlier. Uh, is there a motion to go into executive session? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Good night, everyone.